Good morning, everyone. I'd like to invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Before we actually really get going with the meeting, we thought it would be appropriate, in light of all the recent tragedies here, that we just pause for a moment and observe a moment of silence. We are in session in order, and I'll ask Peggy to call the rule.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Brydenfall.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
And Trustee Townsend.
Present.
All right. Thank you. We have Board members. There are a couple of amendments to the agenda, so need approval.
Move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Chairman.
Question? Comment?
I ask that we hold under the personnel report eighteen, nineteen, and twenty until after executive session.
That would be...
Consider that a friendly amendment.
All right. We have a friendly amendment to the agenda. Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Ray. Audience to community members, petitioners, if anyone here this morning would like to address the board.
Come on, man.
Seeing none or hearing none, we'll move to Communications. Dr. Givens, do you have any... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I skipped right over item number four. Need approval of the minutes of the April sixteenth Board Trustees Meeting.
No movement.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the April sixteenth meeting. Any comment or question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had one. This is... Yeah, on page six.
Page six?
Yeah. At the top of the page up there, we're talking about agreed with the understanding the increase was done by ZipCo and be specific to the four counties that feed to KCK to our college, and made the motion to accept tuition increase. The motion needs to include that statement. The motion included the fact that it was limited to those four counties in Missouri years ago, I'm saying. Very top of the page.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
See the page six?
So the motion was to approve the tuition increase with the understanding that it was specific to the four counties in Missouri. That needs to be in the motion. Otherwise, it's...
Needs to be in the motion to accept these minutes?
Yeah. Needs to be in the motion to amend, and I don't care if Peggy just does it, just so it's clear that was in the motion, not just in the statement. That was actually what we approved.
Actually what we approved.
Right.
Okay. Does everybody track them with that?
Mm-hmm. I read that.
Right. Okay. All right, Peggy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. One more time. Audience, anyone care to address the board?
No, we had a couple other minutes for April nineteen and May fourteen. And I move approval of the...
We had a special meeting.
Yeah, I move approval of the special meeting minutes from April nineteen, May thirteen.
Okay. Clyde's seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And then move approval of the minutes of the special meeting on May fourteen, twenty thirteen.
Second.
All right. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Communication.
We have one letter from the Kansas Board of Regents. Dear Dr. Givens, during the recent Perkins for data audit process, Kansas Board of Regents staff confirmed data performance and effectiveness at Kansas City Kansas Community College. The review process revealed no institutional compliance issues in the area of maintenance of Perkins data records or the proper reporting of Perkins data. As such, the data review is complete. Thank you for making all your resources available to Kansas Board of Regents staff during the audit process. A printed copy of this document will be mailed to your attention. If you have any questions or concerns about the Call D Perkins data review process, please do not hesitate to contact me. Steve A. Larrick.
All right.
That's all we have.
Good. President's report, then.
Good job by the other people.
We have several reports that include students.
Yes.
And I would like to defer to Mr. Bodie and Dr. Agajafa.
Good morning. Thank you. I would like to introduce Andresia Will Coxson from the staff here, and she was the point player in a drug turn-in program, and she's got her tribe with her here, to Tom Hall from our addiction counseling division.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak to the Board of Trustees and everyone out here. We are very excited to share some very great news. The, in September, wait, April, sorry, I'm a little nervous. April twenty-ninth, the state, there is a regional prescription drug take-back that takes place, and Wyandotte County and Leavenworth County, we participated in that. We helped host a, with our Sheriff's Department. Lieutenant Tucker, he, and they, sorry, my, I'm just really nervous right now.
It's all right.
They actually hosted the prescription take-back in Wyandotte County. We partnered, Kansas City Kansas Community College partnered with them, providing students from our addiction counseling program. Dr. Tom Hall, our coordinator of addiction counseling, provided about twenty students to participate, giving out prescription drug awareness materials to all of the community members that came into the different locations. With Lieutenant Tucker's partnership and our students, we were able to get eight locations across Wyandotte County as a drop-off locations for all of our community members to drop off their unused or expired prescription drugs. And we have a handout that you should have in front of you that talks about our results from the time that Kansas City Kansas Community College has started partnering with the Sheriff's Department and Kansas City Kansas Police Department, Officer Lee, with community policing. And as you see, this last take-back on April was, we collected in Wyandotte County six-hundred and sixty-three pounds of prescription drugs. The take-back before that, which is every six months, we collected three-hundred and forty-three pounds. So there was a ninety-three percent increase in our collections in Wyandotte County. We also partnered with the Leavenworth Police Department because of our Leavenworth School, and Sergeant Vogel wasn't able to be here, but in Leavenworth, we collected four-hundred, in the county of Leavenworth, we collected four-hundred and sixty-seven pounds, which the last take-back, we only collected a hundred and seven pounds. Our students were phenomenal here on campus, and I would just like to give an opportunity for a couple of our students that are here to be able to share their experience and why they do the take-back and whatever else. So I'd like to introduce Kathy Francisco.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My experience, this last April was my third time doing the prescription drug take-back, and my experience was, it was awesome to see how more drugs was taken out of medicine cabinets and not flushed down toilets, and the potential harm and danger that could have happened. And this particular drug take-back, although we increased our numbers, two days later, it was reported a little girl wanted to be like her grandmother and put her used paint pill patch on to be like the grandmother, and she expired. And that lets us know that we need to do, continue to do what we're doing and increase what we're doing in order to get awareness out and get that old medicine out of dan, potential danger of harming our young kids. And thank you for allowing this to happen.
Mm-hmm. Keep it going.
My name is Trey May. This take-back was my first year, and I had done it because I needed some community service hours, but next year, I believe I will do it, you know, just because it's a good thing to have. And I was at a location in my community that did not get very many drugs this year because it was his first time, and so hopefully next year, there will be a lot more drugs that we get back, and it will start to snowball like some of the other locations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. It was phenomenal. We had, I had a personal goal here for our campus for five-hundred pounds, and we increased our locations. Our last locations, we only had six locations here in Wyandotte County. We increased it up to eight locations. We hit our south side Wyandotte County and our east side Wyandotte County. We had a location, Bethany Medical Center, which collected the least out of all of the locations in the previous take-backs, and we were about to terminate that location because there wasn't enough poundage. This year, that location was a number-one location in poundage, and we, our students canvassed those streets and in the businesses and putting out flyers and making people aware, so their hard work paid off. This definitely could not have been done without, as a team. I mean, without the team, this wouldn't have been as successful. So I'd like to thank again the Sheriff's Department for allowing us to be able to participate and partner with them, Kansas City Kansas Police Department, community policing for providing officers, additional officers at the locations, and it looks like next year, we're up the goal. Lieutenant Tucker has said, we want to, we want at least a thousand pounds, and I think that's very doable, and with the partnerships that we have, I think that's going to be phenomenal. So, thank you.
Could you give us some more detail about how the logistics, like these partnerships for the drop-off locations and that sort of thing? What's it take for a site to be selected?
Just their willingness. Will, if, we're just looking for sites such as CVS's, Walgreens, they are partners, all of the Golers across Wyandotte County were our partners, Price Chopper in Leavenworth, so that as long as the location is willing to host it, we do the rest of the work. The DEA will come in and drop off boxes to every location. There will be a sheriff's deputy or an officer at each location to supervise those drop-offs. Then the officers take, we all meet in a central location to, with the DEA agent and load it into the vehicle that they take it back, and then they actually burn all of the prescription meds that are turned in. It was, the really great about this opportunity is I got to stay with the DEA agent, and I got to help pack the drugs, I got to help weigh the drugs, I got to see how, it was really, it was just awesome, and it was like CSI. It was really cool.
Ah, we gotta have an investigation here.
But, so, it was just, we called Lieutenant Tucker, made contacts with all the Golers, and we called the additional. Bonds Pharmacy in Argentine was one of our new partners, and they are very excited about it next year. CVS on Shiny Drive was a new partner, and so we were looking to increase those partnerships so that we can bring that awareness truly across the entire Wyandotte County and Leavenworth County. At Leavenworth County, Tonganoxi Police Department was new, Lansing Police Department added on to that, Fort always usually does it, and in our Leavenworth PD, they typically do it, and so it was just a great partnership. And what we do is, we provide everything for them. All they do is just give us a host site.
Now, did I hear you correctly, in Leavenworth, there was only one host site?
Last take-back, there was only one host site. This take-back, we increased four.
Okay, so you...
Yeah, we had four. So...
How do you recruit students for this project?
We'll go to all of the classes, addiction counseling classes with Dr. Tom Hall. They have an opportunity to have community service hours, which a lot of our Behavioral and Social Science Department, that's what they ask their students to actually get out in the community. Book knowledge is great, but the, you know, hands-on reality, community service is that much more powerful, and so they go out and, some of them, you know, have limited time, so we have very different types of community service opportunities. Some will just canvas the area with, with the flyers, some will actually go and be at the host site for, during the take-back. The take-back is on a Saturday from ten to two, so it's a, it's a pretty long day for them. But what was phenomenal is they were able to network with all of our officers and our deputies, and with most of our students, addiction counseling, they're moving into treatment or some kind of education with their degrees, and so this was a great way for them to see other areas that they could look into for their career. So it was just a really great opportunity. Heard really great stories from our students and some things that they would like to look into for their occupation outside of just treatment, so...
Thank you.
You have any questions? No?
Well, thank you all. We really do appreciate it, and thanks to Chuck Wilson from Behavioral Science for his plagues in this, and to Andrea Chastain. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do Dr. Hall, Officer Lee, Lieutenant Tucker, any, do you have anything you'd like to add? Dr. Hall?
From my point of view, thank you, sir. I just want to thank the support of the entire college, the Board of Trustees, especially our dean, who helps make this possible, and the, really, the responsiveness of our students to want to get out and do something for the community. I think this is the kind of prevention activity that we can do, and we can provide the community. It's more like building a fence at the top of the cliff rather than running around collecting everybody at the bottom, and I think they really did like that opportunity to interdict drugs that a lot of people just don't even think about. Probably some of you have medication in cabinets that you held on to for that bad headache that might come down the line. I know I had, the first time this happened in two thousand and eleven, I took some that we found and just got rid of them. It was, it was amazing. I personally had my niece and nephew addicted to heroin. How did they start? They got Oxycontin out of somebody's medicine cabinet, and then they went on, after they plowed through all that, they went on to heroin. This was in Phoenix. So it has real material value that the college is providing the community. Thank you.
All right. Good.
If I could add one more thing. The take-back is every six months, so we're looking at doing the next take-back the last Saturday of September or the last Saturday of October, so you'll be seeing hopefully more flyers and hearing more things about that. So if you can help us pass the word out, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Well, the key to the success of the whole program is the community awareness. Having the students available to canvas, as you, as you did, and some of those kinds of things, helps get the word out there for people that they, they have an alternative, you know, they have something they can do in a positive way, and then you can see the results, people come out. So the, we've been partnering with the DEA for a long time in this program, but I think infusing the students into it and getting the where, the word out and raising the awareness, people will respond to it. So we appreciate that. That's been a welcome partnership in the whole partnership of all of the agencies that participate in it. So congratulations and thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, students. Go recruit some more.
And we welcome all of you guys to volunteer if you want to do that, too.
All right. All right. All right. Thank you, Andrica. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask Coach Darren Elliott and his champion debaters to come up and tell us about their recent success.
Oh, yes. All right. Really?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is this working? Okay. People can stand out here so they can see you. Stand out here, they can see you, they can see your shirts.
All right. So I've got a few things to talk to you about today to highlight some of the awards from
the national tournaments over the last few months. I've got my notes on my phone. I'm not checking baseball scores. I checked those last night. So we had different national tournaments over the course of March and April that we attended. The first national tournament we attended was the National Parliamentary Tournament of Excellence. This is a tournament that you have to qualify for. The top fifty-six teams in the country qualified. There were only two community colleges. We were obviously one of those. At the end, the two gentlemen on the end, Ryan, Evan Johnson, and then Ryan McFarland, they qualified for that tournament. They finished twenty-third in the nation. There were about five hundred teams in the country that were ranked at the end of the year among all four and two-year colleges. They finished twenty-third in the nation at that tournament. They were also the first community college in the history of that tournament. We were the first community college in the history of that tournament to win an elimination round debate, and so that was pretty exciting for us to accomplish that. The next national tournament we attended was the National Debate Tournament. This is also a tournament you have to qualify for. It's very difficult to get into. It's the NCAA Basketball Tournament of Collegiate Debate. It is one of the most difficult and one of the most intensive debate tournaments you could possibly compete in. Ryan and then Kristen in the middle qualified for the NDT. The top seventy-six teams in the country get in. They're the second team in the history of this college to qualify. Ryan and his partner Tom qualified last year, and, which makes Ryan not only a back-to-back qualifier to the NDT, but it makes him the only debater in the country that qualified to both the NDT and the NPTE of any two- or four-year school, and he did it back-to-back. And so that's pretty exciting. Should also mention that no community college has qualified back-to-back to the NDT since Odessa, Texas in the mid nineteen-eighties, and so it had been quite a while before, since a community college had qualified back-to-back. The CEDA National Tournament, which is the Cross Examination Debate Association, is open to all two- and four-year colleges, and we attended that tournament at Idaho State in late March. Ryan and Kristen, who qualified to the NDT, cleared to the elimination rounds of that tournament. They both were also named CEDA All-Americans. To be named the All-American Team, you have to have nominations that talk about both your success as a debater, your success as a student, and your success in the community. And so their nominations allowed them to be named to that team. Only thirty debaters in the country are named to the All-American Team, and we had two of them, and so that was also pretty exciting that they were named to that. The other great thing about the CEDA National Tournament is they award a national title for community colleges, and this is, I don't know why Scott's hiding behind me. Our assistant, my assistant coach, Scott, has the Joy McClintock Trophy here. This is the CEDA National Championship for community colleges. We've won this eight out of the last ten years. This is especially important to Scott. This trophy is named after Joy McClintock, who was his community college coach when he was a debater in college in Florida. And so the Joy McClintock Award, we have eight of those in the last ten years, and so that's a big deal for us, but also especially for Scott, since that was his coach that award is named after. Then finally, the Community College National Tournament, which is FIROPI, which is the honorary organization for community colleges, was in Los Angeles in April. This marks ten years in a row that we have won a national title at that tournament, and so that was pretty exciting. It gets tougher every year because every year, the pressure increases a little bit. The debaters know the pressure increases a little bit, and when you were looking at number ten in a row, it was especially kind of intensive. I'll talk first about parliamentary debate, which is two-person debate where a topic is selected right before the debate begins, so you don't know the topic until the debate begins. And Evan, who's on the end, and then Justin, who's standing next to Ryan, took third in parliamentary debate, and Alex, who's here on the end, took third in Lincoln Douglas debate. Lincoln Douglas debate is a one-on-one format where you know the topic ahead of time and you prepare for it. What was interesting, though, about that event is because team policy debate, which is mostly what we do during the year, didn't make it FIROPI. There wasn't enough entries, and so two weeks before the tournament, I said to these folks, "You're gonna have to do Lincoln Douglas debate, which you've never done." And so we had a week when we got back from the last national tournament before FIROPI to prepare, and they had a week to research a new topic, to have practice debates, to get ready, and we went to the national tournament to do that event, and Justin, who's there in the middle, and Evan, who's on the end, both tied for first place in the nation in that event. And so it was pretty impressive. And then Josh, who's not here today, also took first, tied for first with them in that event. Josh was the top debater at the tournament in that event in that he, out of twelve possible ballots, won eleven of them over the course of the tournament, and Evan and Justin each had won ten over the course of the tournament. The other thing that's important about Justin is, well, there's a lot of important things about Justin, but the impressive thing about Justin at the national tournament in that team parliamentary debate event, the award he's holding, he was top speaker in the country out of a hundred and seventy-eight debaters at that tournament. That's impressive in and of itself. Second of all, it's impressive because it's an event that Justin usually doesn't do, and third, it's impressive because Justin never debated until he came to KCK last year, never debated in high school, started debating in college, mostly because he was friends with Ryan, and Ryan said, "I've got this kid that could be good, probably at debate. I think he should come to school here." And I said, "Okay," and he emailed me, and I didn't email him back right away, and it was actually, or ever, it was actually David Root who called me into his office, and he said, "There's this kid coming here who's moving into housing that's gonna debate. Have you talked to him yet?" And I said, "No, I need to talk to that kid." And so he'd actually talked to David Root before he had talked to me. So, but we're glad that he showed up. So top speaker in the country, and he's worked really hard the last two years, and so that's very impressive. Additionally, at the FIROPI, thank you. Additionally, at that tournament, the team won the debate sweepstakes, which is overall how you do in debate at the tournament, when they count up how everybody did in all of the events, of the debate events, and so there were sixty schools at FIROPI. We won the overall debate sweepstakes, and then we tied with El Paso Community College in Texas for overall sweepstakes combined with both debate and forensics. And so it was a very good year for us, and like I said, it was the tenth year in a row that we'd won a debate title at that national tournament. So a very impressive year and a very impressive showing for them. You know, some years, and I know sometimes you'll ask about the plans for these folks and the way the year's gone, and certainly some years are more challenging than others, and this year, we've certainly had some challenges, but this group that's standing before you today has risen above all of those challenges and has kept the focus on what was important in both their schoolwork and in competing and in representing this college, the shirts they're wearing. At the national tournament, a lot of schools show up, they have school shirts, or they go out and get bowling jerseys, or they get baseball jerseys, and they do something that kind of is about their school or their community. So before we went to the FIROPI National Tournament, I went over to Varsity Sports and picked up dot shirts for everybody to wear at the awards assembly so everybody would know they were from the same school, and so people could ask and talk about them being from Kansas City. But this group is especially impressive. In addition to all of that, over the course of this semester combined, they've spent five hundred hours or more, more than five hundred hours in the community amongst all of them combined, helping with high school students, helping high school students get ready for tournaments, judging at local high school tournaments. Just last night, Evan spent a couple hours up here. You know, Marissa Gray, her son, qualified to high school nationals. He was up here last night and worked with Evan for a couple of hours on the event that he qualified in, so Evan volunteered his time to be here to do that. Evan's also, two other things I'd like to highlight is that in addition to working in the community, these students have been giving back to the community quite a bit. One of our students who couldn't be here today, Zachary Beal, has used his own money. He's purchased a house in Kansas City. He started a house called New Furrow Home. It's a homeless shelter, safe house for youth in the Kansas City area. Evan is doing the same thing in the Wichita area. He has just recently developed a nonprofit that's setting up a homeless shelter for high school youths in the Wichita area, and so these are just examples of these folks kind of giving back to the community in right. He started a house called New Furo Home. It's a homeless shelter safe house for youth in the Kansas City area. Evan is doing the same thing in the Wichita area. He has just recently developed a nonprofit that's setting up a homeless shelter for high school youths in the Wichita area. And so, these are just examples of these folks kind of giving back to the community and raising above all of the challenges that we've, you know, that they've maybe had. We've had a lot of alumni who volunteered assistant coaching over the course of the year. One of them took a week off work from AT&amp;T to go to Los Angeles and to help the team, to help coach, to help judge. One of our other assistant coaches, who is an adjunct here, taught his last class for us on Thursday morning, and then took the next two days off from the law firm he works at to go to FiRopay to help with us as well. And so we have a lot of support. I also need to thank especially, though, for the support, in addition to the entire school, because every time we host an event, we have a multitude of staff that helps out. But for the support this year, Dr. Walker, for all of her continuing support, Dr. Agger Jaffar for her continuing support, Mr. Bodie, who obviously is a big support to us, Dr. Givens, Linda Sutton, all of the board members for supporting this team and their endeavors and going out and representing the college and bringing home a lot of hardware. Alex is coming back next year. Everybody else you see before you has received a scholarship to transfer somewhere else. Next to Alex is Maren. Maren will probably be going to UMKC, she's looking at UMKC and Missouri State. Kristen, who's next to her and then Ryan, will be transferring to debate together at Wichita State University, which is one of my alma maters. And Justin, who's in between them, will be transferring to debate at Sterling College. He'll actually be debating for a coach at Sterling, who was a KCKCC graduate, who just graduated from Sterling, who, David debated here, is graduating from Sterling and will be a coach at Sterling next year, and he'll be coaching Justin, so Justin's transferring there. And then Evan on the end has a scholarship and is transferring to do debate at Washburn University. So, all of these folks are off to good things, and Alex is the lone one coming back, so he's got a lot to do next year. But appreciate all of your time. And then Scott, who is our, like I said, is the assistant coach, also works tirelessly and travels a ton, and we spend a lot of time on the road, and it's been a great year, and so I thank you for all of your support and appreciate it, and hopefully this showing this year has made the school proud and everybody's happy. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Well, congratulations to you, Darren, once again, and on, and the entire team for, for all of your efforts. Students, I'd like for you to walk forward to the table, if you would please, and coaches, would you join them up here? And I'd like for you to turn around and face the cameras, because we want the community to see your faces and know who you are, and we will give you a round of applause. Okay, board members, any questions or comments? We don't know what to say after this many years, you know, it's, congratulations, it's just phenomenal. And thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy.
Don.
Yes.
We need to get something for them to have, to change out there on the highway, where they got about KCK debaters.
I think they're putting that up with Velcro out there now, just so they can change it out every year. It's been ordered, yeah.
They were gonna arrest him.
The state has to change it, they won't let us.
Yeah.
They threatened to put Brandon in jail.
The Department of Transportation.
The Department of Transportation has to change it. Okay, well, they gotta hurry you up, because they, we don't want another time.
All right. Do we have other students?
You still got us.
No.
No more students.
Okay. Dr. Yum said everything for your report?
Except for the Employee Recognition and Retirement Dinner.
Oh, yes.
There were 251 attendees, that was the largest in history, and I dare say it was the briefest in history, but we had a wonderful time. It was, it was really great. So, thank you for your support, the board, and to my colleagues from the college.
Well, and congratulations to everyone receiving awards and, and moving into retirement and so forth. Okay, I think we're ready for item eight, personnel, and we'll hear from Dean Marks. And take note of the amendment that you have as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to draw your attention this morning to Personnel, item A, 8A, for your information, A 1 through 17, and asking for your approval of items B 1 through 17. And as Chairman Ash said, we do have the one correction on the amendment to the agenda.
We'll move. We have a motion in the second. Remember, we're holding items 18, 19, and 20 until, after the executive session, so under B, it's items 1 through 17. Any other comment or question, board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I do have a question.
Too late.
On your, on your report of a analysis of part-time employees to determine that they should be considered full-time.
Yes.
Could you give us a progress report on that?
Well, we are still working on identifying who those employees are. And as the report has noted, we will identify who those employees are and then make a determination as to their eligibility for health insurance, according to the Affordable Healthcare Act.
Is there a complication in being able to identify those employees?
No, there's no complication, it's just something that we're working on, and we want to make sure we have all the correct information when we finalize our report.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're at Agenda Item 9, Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Agger Jaffar.
Thank you. I'd like to draw your attention to the amendment to the agenda, the approval for the proposed changes to the master contract. Last year, when we negotiated the master contract, Faculty Association and members of the administration agreed to form a committee to look at definitions specifically for tech faculty. That committee was formed, and I think it was chaired by Vice President Brian Bodie, and they have come up with some definitions, which I have, which we have included, and if they meet with your approval, we would like to ask for you to approve them and sign them.
Before motion, what are the, are there any ramifications to the definitions, the new definitions as they were before?
I think that's the whole purpose of us doing this, is because tech was being used as a descriptor of the faculty, but it is a location. And we needed to come up with a way to distinguish between the building and the faculty. And so, no, we don't think there's ramifications, except for the fact that we have, if we have non-industry programs in the new tech building, they will not be confused, and that was, that was the purpose of the whole drill.
All right, and legal counsel, you reviewed?
Yes, Trustee Rios, we've reviewed it, and it has been vetted several times. In that regard, the lead negotiation, lead negotiator for the faculty is also present to talk about the process, and he may also be quoting the Kansas motto, if you would.
Okay, I'm back. I won't be as long this time. I was the lead negotiator for the faculty, and Daryl was right, the process was vetted. We went through this process. What was nice about this process was that we, at the table, under negotiation law, agreed to move outside of the table to have this committee formed. There was a joint committee between the faculty and the administration, and from my perspective, it worked very well, and I think the faculty were very pleased with the ability to sit down with the administration outside of a formal negotiations room to work on this continuing. So we got the contract taken care of, but then this language issue, we agreed to take care of as well, and it was vetted. We went through different months, November, December, January, was sent to the Vice President for Academic Affairs, who made a couple of recommendations through email, that was sent to the committee, changes were made, and we were very pleased with the process. So, the Faculty Association's very pleased and pleased with the process, and Mr. Bodie, who did chair the committee with us, worked very hard with us all to make sure this was done and done correctly, and that people were happy, and our side is happy, so we appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna quote you on that.
And the Kansas motto?
And the Kansas motto, I don't know the Latin version of it, but through the stars of the difficulties is the translation, so I know the translation to it. But yes, that was what Daryl mentioned before the meeting. So, yeah, it worked well in the process, I thought went very well, and, and so if this is a sign of the way we can work together on these contract issues as a model, then it's a model that I'm pleased with and hope that we can use in the future if we need to.
All right.
So, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Now, I move the, Seth's first to the, to the master agreement, is that correct wording? Between the Board of Trustees and the professional employees, to the Kansas City, Kansas Committee of Counsel.
Second. Okay, any other comment or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Daryl, that's what happens when you negotiate with the debate coach, I guess, that's all I can tell you. They're national champs for some reason, you know.
Chairman Ash, would you like to sign it now? Darren, are you going to sign it on behalf of Faculty Association? Okay, so should I just get Chairman Ash?
It'd be nice to have you guys sign it together, but.
I have a.
With the holes in it? You got a master?
Yeah, I have a clean copy, this page too. Thank you very much. Darren, I'll give it to you to give to Jerry. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. I would now like to ask Cheryl Postleway, Director of the Library, Don Bellut, and Mike Bigelow from our Construction Technology to come up and share some news with you about the amazing circulation desk in our library.
I normally just talk.
Go ahead, just talk.
I just needed someone from tech to do it. A brief history of what was going on with circulation desk. The circulation desk that we had in the library was there since 1972 when the library was built, and we really discovered a couple of years ago that we had a problem when we put in a new security system, that it interfered with some of the security stuff. I'll let you, I'll let you do the pointer. So what we're showing you here is the old desk and what the new desk looks like. We, I have put it in the budget for a couple of years, saying, "We need to start thinking about this," and in the fall, I met with Tamara, and she had the brilliant idea, she said, "Talk to the Construction Technology Department," I had not even thought of it. And so I talked with Cliff, and then met with Don, and we went from there. The new desk, if we had purchased it from a library vendor, would have cost a minimum of probably $60,000. And none of us had that. With the technology group building it, I think you told me it came to about $9,500 for materials and everything, and we were able to customize it the way we wanted it. The students that worked on it, four high school students, three college students, did a phenomenal job. We went from having six drawers to put things in, to now 20. Everything matches. The reference desk that we had in the past was just a hodgepodge of stuff, so it all is very continuous, it flows very nicely. We made it a little bit taller for, at the circ desk, and for even me, that is vertically challenged. It works great. Plus, we put in a consultation table so that we can work with those who are in wheelchairs or whatever, or if we have a student that we need to spend more time with, we can sit there with them and work with them. The picture that you're seeing right now, we tried to capture before they left for the day, Don and some of his, his assistants and some of the students, because we wanted their picture there. And you'll notice underneath, we moved the book drop, and underneath, Don said he didn't like what, how we had labeled it on the old one, it was just a piece of paper that said "book drop." And so, Mark, I can't pronounce it, Molman, in machine technology, made the sign there for us, it says "book return." The front of the desk, we also have a brand-new display case, which we really like, it opens from the front instead of having to crawl in through the back. This was the part that surprised me the most, when they put it up right in front, in the center of the whole thing in front, we have KCKCC. So, Don?
Mike.
Mike? The other assistant is not here, but they did a phenomenal job, and they were great to work with, especially since on one measurement, I was two feet off, and Don said. Yeah, I was two feet short, so it worked out good that way. We just put in another section of drawers. But Don was great to work with, his students were a delight when they came in. I'd also like to express a special thanks to Jeff Sitka and his maintenance crew, because they, they finished a month and a half early. And he comes in one Monday morning, he says, "We're done, when can we install?" So I quickly called Jeff, and they were able to get the old desk out, get the electrical out on almost, I think it was a two-day notice that they had it all out, and then putting the new stuff in, new electrical in. Also on your desk, I want to tell you about the little bag that's there for you. We always, whenever the library does presentations and everything, I like to give out special things. You have in there a couple of bookmarks, a notepad, a pen, and you've got a dice. The dice is to help you make decisions. So you ask the question, roll the dice, and absolutely, or go for it, or like that. It's like a take on the old crazy eight ball. But we thank you for allowing us to show you the new pictures. Also, come over and see it, because remember, we are your library also. So, thank you. Any questions? And I don't think they wanted to say anything.
Yeah, Don, do you want to say something? Talk about the experience of doing all of this. Say something, Don, because honestly, you deserve a lot of credit for doing this.
I am Don Bellut, I'm the Construction Technology Instructor. Our students, we spent about a month doing the planning stage and the construction. Like Cheryl said, we finished a little bit early. It was really crowded in our shop, if you'd been over there, we were kind of struggling finding a place to walk and stuff, so I talked to our dean, Cliff Smith, and said, "What can we do?" He said, "Well, let's see if we can get it put in," and like she said, we called the maintenance people up, they were thrilled to come in and tear the old one out. We installed the new one in about, well, about six hours, so. It was, it was a good opportunity for our students, I think they learned a lot. It was a good opportunity for us all together, those rainy days and cold days that we didn't want to be out on the house, we were able to spend in the shop on this particular project, so it was a good learning experience for all of us all the way around.
Is this something that, you know, I'm thinking a lot of cost savings here, and good educational opportunities as well. Is this something that you could see happening again, or would you, or do you think this has happened to fall in place?
Actually, when she had approached us about doing this, we kind of debated whether we wanted to or not. We are in the process of building a house over on 56 and Leavenworth Road. We could have utilized that time in building the kitchen cabinets and bathroom vanities and stuff for that house, but we saw their need, and so we jumped in and followed through that project, so we're a little behind schedule on what we want to do with the house, but we'll catch up in the. but we'll catch up in the future on that.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. I think that's a maybe.
That's a maybe, huh?
Yeah.
Maybe on that? All right, Cliff.
Yeah, all right.
Roll the dice.
[laughing] We're gonna roll the dice.
They didn't come up out of luck.
Ask later.
Well, Cheryl, Dawn, and Mike, thank you all very much, and please pass on to the students, their workmanship, craftsmanship's. Beautiful, it's phenomenal. And really, really, I know, makes the library a much more pleasant place, so.
And this one's gonna last more than 40 years.
Yeah, way more than 40 years, yeah.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now for the rest of my report. I included a couple of documents for you, the Dean's Council newsletter that the deans have worked on, and the report to the Higher Learning Commission about our degree qualifications profile, and lots of other interesting information. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
How was, we had another team that you didn't have come. They spoke in your...
The SCIF team.
The SCIF.
Yes, it's because semester is over and most of them have gone.
Motion.
Yeah.
Well, we'd like to, I think it'd be nice to meet them when they, maybe I guess you'd have to, when they return.
Turn in August, maybe, yeah, I could try and do that then.
Okay.
All right. Are there questions about Dr. Agajoffer's report or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report. Acceptance of the Dr. Agajoffer's report? Who seconded?
Me.
Clyde?
Yeah.
All right, I've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Tamara.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Bodie?
Again, I'd like to introduce a presentation. Jay Matlock and John Burright are gonna talk about KC-KCC Made.
All right. We need to roll that up here. Can we roll that?
Can I move this bench without breaking anything?
Yes, yeah, don't break the pots.
Yeah, I want that on camera. Entice people to come.
Okay, so, we'll get started. Have a team here, we're representing KC-KCC Made, which is an initiative between the Workforce Development Department and the bookstore, so that students, faculty, and staff can sell the cool stuff that they make at the bookstore. This is a partnership that first started because part of workforce development's task is to serve the small businesses in the community and the entrepreneurs in the community. And we have the Innovation Summit, we have a lot of workshops and courses and classes, and we found that we were getting a turnout from the community, which is great, but we weren't always pulling the entrepreneurs that exist within our walls, our own students, faculty, and staff. We weren't getting the support services to them as well, they weren't always in attendance. And so, we needed to think creatively on how we could make sure we get those support services, those small business and business support services, to the entrepreneurs within our college. And so, we went on a visit to K-State to visit their business division, and they had something kind of similar. And so, we tweaked and worked with them a little bit, and created what we call KC-KCC Made. So, as I stated, it's a partnership between workforce development and the bookstore. And we opened April 5th, and we have, I think we almost have 10 students, faculty and staff selling products, and we hope to grow that here pretty quick. But I have John Burright, the Director of the bookstore, to talk a little bit more about the details.
Well, some of the details that Jay left out were that the students had to apply for this, or the faculty and staff. They had to present their stuff to workforce development, and then meet with a person from Small Business?
Kansas Small Business Development Center for a consulting session, to get coached.
Which was very good. I went through that too, it was kind of interesting, going from the other end of a big business to a small business, and meeting with her and talking about the items that you were thinking about selling, what your marketing plan was, what your level of effort, what you put into the product, and then trying to figure out what the correct pricing strategy for that is. And that's what they went through. Then, once that was approved by those two, it was brought down to the bookstore, we went through that, accepted, or questioned some of the products we had. Some that we returned to students because we were wanting them to take a look at what their product was and make a concerted effort that they figure out that, is this really the best product they want to put forward? We had some people that had some products that were a little questionable, they had really good products, and they had some that weren't as good. And we said, "We'd like to really have these, but these you want to look at. You don't want to be presenting your work as being, you know, not the best quality." The stuff that's not the best quality, you put a plan in it and give it to your grandma, and she'll be happy with it. But if you're selling something to the public, you want to put your best foot forward. We've established an area in the bookstore that's around the corner from the main counter. We've got a small sign that's there, and Jay's looking at developing a better sign to put it on there. But it's a little area where we have, this is a small sampling of the products that are down there, but it's a variety of very unique items, sort of a gallery kind of items, plus we've got some food items and books, that is a place that faculty, staff, and students can come and find a unique gift or item that you may not find in your mass merchandise stores, and you're not having to go to an art gallery to find it. Part of the partnership is that the students, faculty, and staff then understand that there's a commission based on this, that they get 70% of the profits, then the 30 that's left over is split between Jay and I. The bookstore does the business of collecting the tax and then reporting it, so they don't have to do that. We keep an inventory of that, and then every quarter, or semester, we will go through the inventory, and we're at that point now that we're getting ready to send disbursements to the students and faculty and staff with the products they've sold. Their contract states that they can continue this partnership with us at any time that they wish to cancel it, they just have to come and make the request of us that we remove their stuff, we do an inventory, and we settle up with them. And we've got some students here that, and staff that...
Yeah, we have Molly Mahon and Janet Manson, who are students. And then we have Scott Parsley, who is a staff member. We knew going in that we had very talented students and entrepreneurs here in our community, and our, it exceeded our expectations. I hope you get a chance to go down to the bookstore and see some of the really cool stuff they're making. So I'm gonna have each of them quickly describe what they're selling and the experience that they're having.
Hello, I'm Molly, and I sell upcycled furniture and earrings, homemade button earrings, and jewelry holders in the bookstore. I found this really helpful in starting a small business. I do sell outside of the bookstore as well, and I've also had an additional consulting session, and they really helped me think about stuff that I hadn't thought about for the business, like the marketing aspect, what age of consumers that I want to market products for, since the things I'm selling are different, the upcycled furniture is different than the jewelry. So, I found that very helpful, and it's been a great opportunity working with everyone and seeing everyone's products that they sell, and I hope to continue to do so next year when I'm here. Thank you.
I'm Janet Manson, and I do pottery. I came back to school, and I have taken the art classes, and I'm in pottery. And I enjoy making it, I love doing the pots, but you can only have so many pots in your house. And, you know, there are very limited places where you can put your work to sell or to show. And so, this gave us a great opportunity to be able to show our work and to sell it, help us, you know, make the money to pay for classes for the next semester. And it's nice to be able to go in someplace and actually see your work on display and for sale. And talking to the lady from the small business, the small business instructor, helped with how to price things, that was a big problem for me. You know, I always priced it with, is whether I liked it or not, and that's really not a good way to price items. But, and told us, you know, how to market, and where the best places would be to put our work. And so, this has given us a real good opportunity, and I've, so far, I've sold five bowls and a plate, so it's worked really good. Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Scott Parsley. I turn pins and bowls, and then I also scroll puzzles and other items. And as she was saying, it is hard to price your product, 'cause you think it's worth more than what other people do. But this has given a great opportunity to get my product out there where I didn't know where else to go. So this has been great. I want, thank you.
So, in closing, we had a small feature on Channel 41 News about this part of the store. We, in the National Association of College Stores, did a newsletter on KC-KCC Made, and they're gonna do a spread in their next magazine on the store.
Oh.
I had a call last week from University of Arizona, asking questions about this and wanting to kind of replicate it. So I think it's getting out there, and it's a great thing, and it's all because of the talent that we have, and the talented entrepreneurs within the community. So, we all have three asks. One is, buy this stuff. Two is, get your family, friends, and strangers to buy this stuff. And three, if you know anybody making some cool stuff here in the school, tell them about this opportunity. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Jay, outstanding. Congratulations. The dot is hot.
Yes. I really want to commend John.
I have a question, sir.
John, the bookstore...
I have a question, sir.
I think is just not a...
Shut up, JD.
It's very, it's very underrated, I believe. And its service to this campus and the community, and the, and the collaborative that you have with staff, with the various events, and with now the students, I think is just tremendous. And I'm just very appreciative of your and your staff's outreach, because it'd be very easy just to just keep doing your business. But I think you have enriched the campus with your outreach, and I think that this is going to be something that could really take off, not just for the benefit of the entities and raising a little bit of funds, but for the students, and is a motivator for them. So, you know, there's continual partnerships, we've kind of had two now brought to our attention today, and that's, I think, just outstanding, as we really focus on the community aspect of being a community college. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, JD. Down here to my left, I think we have some comments. Who's up? Clyde?
I have a question I wanted to ask about the layaway plan.
[laughing]
Really? For your merchandise, what's the top price on that piece of pottery there? Is that the expensive piece of thing that you have there?
That one... Is $45, yeah, yeah.
Is that barbecue sauce, Jay?
Yes, it is barbecue sauce, that's $3.99.
[laughing]
Not quite Vanuken White, but we'll, yeah. Any other questions? The pins.
The pins.
Tell us the price of this.
Turn it around so we can...
The pins, the pins will vary anywhere from $30 to $60, depending on what style it is and what material it's made out of.
Okay.
Every, each one of those pins that Scott and I have made are completely unique, you won't find another one exactly the same because of the materials they use. We use a combination of either woods, acrylics, or plastics, and he's got a couple that are both wood and plastic. It's a very unique process that they do, where they bond the plastic into the voids of...
You break it, you buy it, you know, you... Do they come in personal?
What is that, Jay?
They, we have either little velvet pouches that can be put into, or a gift tube that you can get.
Have we sold anything at this point? Has anybody...
Yeah, we have sold over 24 pieces of merchandise, a total of close to $275 worth of sales. And we've only been doing this two months, two months. So, we're hoping that as fall comes around, people will see this in, back to school, because we've got it prominently displayed, and they will take note of it, and we can increase both the visualization of it and sales.
And she makes not only the earrings, but the keeper for the earrings, right?
Yeah, the holders, yep.
Yeah.
This is just a sample, much more at the bookstore.
At the bookstore.
Yeah. At the bookstore.
Yeah, this is just...
Molly, are you selling earrings?
Yes.
I didn't get to see that.
Jay, hold up your rings again.
Bookstore, bookstore.
All right, thank you. I didn't get an answer to my layaway plan, but...
You didn't get an answer for...
Competition with the Home Shopping Network. Outstanding.
No, it's outstanding.
Somebody else had a question or comment, board members? No?
Dr. Walker, just curious, the connection between your fine arts program and this, is there, are there big conversations around teachers and students in your programs? I know it's campus-wide, but it seemed like kind of a natural fit in your programs.
During the vetting process of the process, Jay was kind of to submit contracts, and they suggested procedures for students and faculty to make this work for consideration through HFA. We had a good discussion with him. Of course, we're very proud of Janet, she does wonderful work, but there are other students in the Kansas City.
Seems like a nice, again, cross, cross-department communication and conversation, so it's great.
Signs that dawn records that are gonna go in the bookstore to signify where they're in the bookstore, or gonna be made by...
Super, that's great, thank you.
All right.
Well, thank you. Next, I'd like to take your attention, please, to Attachment A in your agenda. This is Resolution 13-2, the continuing process of the bond resolution that we discussed last month. Today, the, on the timeline that we have, so that this money can be available, today, this is the resolution where the board says, "Yes, in fact, Piper Jeffrey, go out and market and prepare to sell these bonds." On page two of the, at the top, you will see, we've set the parameters that it may not exceed 5.8 million, and it may not exceed a net interest cost of 3%. We're still under the protest period, we cannot progress until then. Because of timing the progress, the protest period will end June 1. We don't have a meeting for 18 days of the board after that. And so, we're putting this in at this time, so that if, in fact, it clears the protest period, by doing this, we're telling Piper Jeffrey, "Go out there and get them. By your 18th meeting, we'll be ready for the final resolution, and this bond issue will go." So, I'll answer your question. John Haas from Rentson Financial is here to keep me out of trouble again. No, he's forgotten more about this than I'll ever know, so that's why he's here. And, but this is, this is the one that says, "We're gonna go, we're gonna go sell these. If you keep them under these parameters, and we clear the protest, we're committed to go getting up to $5.8 million." So, I need, please, the resolution is authorizing the offering for sale of lease purchase agreement certificates of participation, Series 2013 of KC-KCC, Wyandotte County, Kansas. And so, I asked that that Resolution 13-2 be approved, and the chairman authorized to sign, and we've got about 19 places to sign today.
So moved.
I have a quick.
Yes, ma'am. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second now. Question or comment, discussion?
You don't have any company in Wyandotte County that can do this?
This is the same companies that did all of the first bond that we're extending, ma'am.
I know, but I'm saying, we don't have anybody in Wyandotte.
Ma'am, I don't know of one. We might, I do not know of them.
Brian, I am not aware of any of those, thank you, from Wyandotte County. Piper Jeffrey is, has an office here... Piper Jeffrey is, has an office here in the Kansas City metropolitan area, but we're specifically a Wyandotte County investment. I'm not familiar with any data of a corporate office here in this county.
Thank you.
What's the current interest rate that's going on these?
Well, we think the net interest cost would be about two and a quarter percent if the market is set.
So, three percent is...
If the market moves between now and the...
And that's plenty of leeway between those.
I believe it's plenty of leeway.
Yeah, based on what you're doing there.
If not, we'll just come back and talk to you about that on the evening. The board decided they would like to get some leeway, but the resolution can't be amended to allow for that. But that is about seventy-five basis points leeway.
Yeah, I think it's five, as long as, it sounds like a pretty good cushion there, based on what it is now.
Are we required to read this resolution?
No, you're not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It is available if any of the public would like to see it.
That's correct. Ready for your action.
Call for a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Proceed with it.
Then, an Attachment B, which is, thanks, John. I'll talk to you at three o'clock this afternoon with, this afternoon at three o'clock, we have our bond rating call with Standard and Poor's, so I'll get torn up this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
You'd like lunch.
Brian, are you still taking questions on your report?
Yes, sir. Please.
Yeah, one thing I really was happy to see, this, your Student Financial Office Service Delivery Action Plan, that looked like a really good effort by that organization to help students get aid, and then continue to see the nice increase in the FAFSA applications. Every year, we've got a nice increase in that. I think it's what the college is doing to helping students to realize, one, that those are available, and then, two, helping them complete those applications. I think that's great, your department's developed that plan, and it looks like it's working.
Thank you. Dr. McDowell, congratulations.
Yes, but, Dr. McDowell, I do have a question. You've highlighted two. Under the top five reasons for student-initiated withdrawals, too far behind has exponentially gone, you know, one ninety-seven. That may not sound like a lot, but compared to ninety-five, so, and that's falling too far behind, what's our, what's our take on that?
The answers there are the ones that the students provide to us.
Right.
And so, this is their assessment of why they need to withdraw. And so, what we may want to do, if we want to know more about what that means, maybe survey them or talk to them, my guess is as we look at students who are going to play, who have much on their plate, we go through the student survey, and our students are going a lot. So, we can probe into that more, and they're consistent. They've been consistent over the last three or four years, and students can indicate. That's always along the top line.
Okay. Because I was hoping our developmental strategies, perhaps, and the intrusive, is that what you're calling it?
Intrusive advising, yes.
Yeah. Still uncomfortable with that word, but anyway, intrusive counseling would help with that.
Yeah, it should do. And we piloted a student needs assessment survey for developmental students, some sections this semester, and we want to do it more for, beginning in fall, to determine what the needs are, and then to try and help students address those particular needs. That, in conjunction with intrusive advising, should be, we should be able to address some of these issues.
Okay. And you're already kicking that off next year?
Yeah, yeah. We already have kicked it off, kind of, as a pilot in spring, yeah.
And then, in the Leavenworth Center, the admissions enrollment activity, administrative withdrawals went up fairly significantly. So, is there something behind that that you might be able to share?
Well, administrative withdrawals, again, those are things that are initiated by the faculty, and it could very well be the student stop attending, and so, if they're instructed to withdraw, the student stops the school. And so, it puts this, it puts a little act of kind of being of intention on behalf of the faculty, when the student is no longer coming to class, lets administrative withdraw them. It also gives students an opportunity if they want to come back into the class, which is a teaching initiative.
Okay, okay, that's good. All right. Well, thank you. Just want you to know, we pay attention to all your charts.
Do you have any other questions on my report?
Yeah, I don't, you may not know this, Brian, but on page nine, always interested in the number of students who request accommodations, and the fact that we're always able to meet those, I think that's an important aspect of this college, that we get, we have students that need accommodations, and we are able to meet them because we make them accommodations, so...
Again, Dr. McDowell's staff, and Jaclyn Anderson and the Academic Resource Center, they work hard, and you know, and I know, that we get no extra support from anyone from the state to do that. And so, out of their budget, they do that. And we have some talented, talented people to help us get through, that they've recruited, found, so we know who to tap outside to get help when we need help in a specific area. And, of course, Robert Beach may be the best in the country at what he does.
I think it's important that people in the community who need accommodations know they can, know they can come here and get them. I think it speaks well of our college and what we provide.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise, again.
Thanks, Denise.
Okay, then, if that's it there, I would ask for your approval for my report, and then we'll go talk how badly I write on the drug policy.
Approval of the Vice President's report.
Second.
You have a motion in a second for the discussion, a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Your Attachment B, but is now been replaced by an amendment that you should have gotten, is the second reading of the Drug Testing Policy and Procedure for Student Athletes. It has, in red, are the corrections that we made based upon your discussions at the last board meeting. In blue are the grammatical corrections that Dr. Aga Jaffar donated to me.
Yeah. Blue, red for the doctor...
No. Blue, the blues are tomorrow's corrections.
Which one are you looking at? Because I've only got blue.
The new one that came in, yes. And I have one more correction for you, please, on the second to the last page, number ten, definitions, number two, second sentence, it is not banned, B-A-N-D-E-D, it is banned, B-A-N-N-E-D.
We've got so many copies of this.
Ten, paragraph two, second sentence, the word banned, B-A-N-D, B-A-N-N-E-D, banned.
Banded, it's not banded, it's banned.
But this, again, is our program, and the reason we're trying to get this and get this completed and get this approved, please, we have student athletes who are out there today, who we are trying to sign the letters of intent to returning student athletes. We need them to know, they come August when they come to the college, they need to be clean, they need to stay clean, and we're going to make sure that they do so. And so, I ask with these corrections that you approve this policy so that we can get it printed up, get it, all the corrections out of it, get it printed as original, and get it sent to all of these student athletes.
First, our athletic director, just, do you have any comments?
Oh, I'd also like to give this approved, so you can debate this, or I'll put it there and then, just kind of raise the standard that we have.
But it's in the right direction, so you're fully endorsing this? Okay. Mr. Counsel, how are you?
This too, trustee Reus, this too has been fully vetted, ready for your action and appropriate. I anticipate that you'll make tweaks after the first year, but this is a wonderful, sort of stab at this, and I imagine any modifications in the future will be mine.
Move approval of the policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further question or discussion?
Yeah, I, I just want to emphasize that this is a positive policy. It's not, it's not punitive. I mean, it has consequences for students, but the emphasis on the policy is really to help students and athletic trainers, athletes, and so on. So, it's, I think that's the emphasis, and the key, Tony, is going to be the education piece and providing help to students. We hope we don't have anybody that falls under this policy of the punitive side of it, but what we'll be looking for is what process are we using to educate student athletes to give them help if they need it? So, that's why I saw positive about this policy, is the fact it is an effort to help students and prevent this kind of behavior taking place among those students. So, that's why I want to emphasize, that's why I think it needs to be put in place.
And this was, this is Tony Valerie Stambergue, when she was interim AD, and Rodney Christiansen from our Athletic Training Department, have, they put together ninety-nine percent of this, and I've just been their spokesman. This is a great policy, and again, a positive policy, so thank you. And I guess I get to eleven, Finance, A, I'm still up.
Well, we need to vote on this motion. Dr. Daniels, thank you. Any other comment or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, Brian.
Excuse me, thank you. Under eleven, A, Finance, I ask for your approval for the payment of the monthly bills.
Finance Committee has reviewed, move approval of payment of the bill.
Second.
Okay, any questions, comment, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I ask for your approval under eleven, B, the financial reports.
Finance Committee has reviewed. We do note that at this time of year, we should be at seventeen percent overall. We're at twenty-two percent of remaining budget authorities, so that's very good. Facility support, we have talked about in the past, so I will not repeat what we've said over the last couple of board meetings. It's just, that just remains true. Under other college funds, we are reviewing those. As you know, we are preparing for budget, and we have no overt concerns at this juncture. We'll give a more detailed report next month on those. The electrical usage, you will note that it did go up over previous Aprils, and the cost went up as well, even though the cents per kilowatt hour was lower, actually, than last year, which was kind of surprising. But nonetheless, we believe that our energy efficiency is continuing in the right direction.
If you, if you look closely at that bill, last year's bill was for twenty-nine days, the year before twenty-eight, and the year before twenty-nine days of usage. This year's bill was for thirty-four days of usage. That may have had something to do, we don't control when BPU come read the meter, and so, there, with five more days, it's, it may have something to do why, while the, why the usage was up in...
That bill, minimum cycle.
Yeah, well, they've never been consistent. I mean, as he's noted every time, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, thirty-four, they're just, I don't know their method of determining, but we do, we are, we are feeling comfortable, though, with how the thing is progressing. I just wanted you to know.
All right. Was that a motion?
Yes, move approval of the financial report.
Mr. Towns in seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C.
And I would ask your approval of item eleven, C, one through seven. Seven is on amended agenda, with a note that on number four, we went back to baseline Investments Company and asked that to be a three-year contract versus a five at the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee has reviewed the recommendations, and as pointed out, we are trying, as you know, to get away from leasing and this sort of thing, so we said, well, we, obviously, at this moment in time, we do need to continue the usage of the property at Seventy-Five Thirty-Nine State Avenue, but we're hopeful as we start the new facilities master plan, the educational plan, getting all those strategic items together, that we will, yes, align, that, you know, we'll have a plan for facilities after a three-year period of time. Also, we did have discussion, oh, we're not on D yet, I'm sorry. All right, I got it. So, we did review all the recommendations and do support.
Number seven is the recommendation from your special board meeting, a recommendation to enter into an energy audit agreement with Chevron Energy Services. After a review of, again, their proposals and of the presentations, and a strengthening of their education plan that Chevron sent to us afterwards, we're very comfortable with Chevron starting the next process in energy conservation. So, that's what number seven is, a selection of Chevron.
So, in respect to that, Brian, I guess item number six, cannot wait for item number seven.
Unfortunately, no, sir, it cannot, because, again, it's going to be ninety days just to get through the energy audit, and Flint will be real warm before then.
It's had...
Well, you know, you just have to ask.
I know, sir, I wish.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been numerous times that that's had to be repaired, so we're looking forward to stopping that, but, of course, for the comfort of the staff and students, we need to have it operable.
Okay.
Move approval of item C under Finance.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then, under eleven, D, brought to my attention by admissions people and by Athletic Department, that when I brought the tuition rate last month, Cass County is really a part of the metro community that we missed, and it was just an oversight. And so, what I'm asking today is to increase a fifth county into the metro rate, which is Cass County, Ray Peck, that area that comes in on the south side of the city. So, I ask for your approval of eleven, D, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
We will include Cass County. All right. Item twelve, Report of Committee. Kathy, would you like to kick us off?
I just have a brief report. We had a session on the Listening Project here on April twenty-fifth. Unfortunately, we had a fairly small turnout when we set that date. We were not aware of the mayor's induction into, so we lost several people there. However, part of the reason for having that session was not only to update the community on the progress on the Listening Project and those items that had a high priority, but also to recruit additional and new members. And even though the turnout was fairly small, we had several people that indicated that they were very interested in serving and being more involved with the Advancement Council, and we have a small group that's meeting next week to kind of look over... and we have a small group that's meeting next week to kind of look over that list and determine what that Advancement Council will look like moving forward. We're still very interested, if anyone on the Board of Trustees has a recommendation of someone they would like to see on the Advancement Council, we would certainly be happy to entertain that. Thank you.
All right. Other committee reports?
Yeah, the Policy Committee, we have, Ms. Flunder and I have met twice with Dean Marks. Dean Marks has gone through the policy book and made corrections, brought some things up to date, and we have met twice to review those changes, and I think we're going to meet at least, we're going to meet at least one more time, hope we'll get it down pretty quickly. But it is a pretty voluminous process. There are a lot of policies, and we'll be bringing those to the board probably in June, Dean Marks, for our first reading, so we're wrapping that up.
The Endowment Board had a meeting, and I'd like to report, they are, I guess, Patrick, I'll refer to it as bundling, the sponsorship opportunities for our, our college. There's a twenty-five thousand dollar level, which would have a company's name with one thousand dollar scholarships, five one thousand dollar scholarships. It would include a contribution to the KCKCC Building Fund of twenty-five hundred dollars, corporate sponsorship to the Hall of Fame Dinner, a title sponsor for our scholarship golf tournament, table sponsorship for the gala, passes to the meet and greet events, logo recognition on the endowment website, logo rec, recognition on the, any displays for all events for the endowment, and then a listing on the endowment donor board in the Juul Student Center. And those sponsorships go from twenty-five thousand to five thousand dollars, and then, of course, there's opportunity for individual sponsorships. But the work continues on trying to enhance the offerings for opportunities for the corporate community to partner with our college, and to enhance our facilities and our scholarship opportunities for our students. So, we are, you know, just wanting to report, I think that's a good thing for the Endowment Board to have endorsed, and look forward to Patrick reporting some positive things moving forward. It just, just came out last week, so we're going to have to give him a little time, give him another week, another week, and then we'll, we'll expect hearing some news. But the, and then, the Endowment Board, just so the trustees are aware, did ask for the President of the Board and myself to have a meeting with Dr. Givens, talking about some potential collaborative efforts on, with the, the Board of Trustees and the Endowment Board. And so, we'll schedule that meeting after, you know, we got a lot of graduations and activities going on in the college right now. But probably by next board meeting, we should be able to report to you about that meeting.
Okay. That be it for committee reports? All right, move to item thirteen miscellaneous.
Move for executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters to protect the privacy interests of individuals to be discussed. We also need to have executive session to discuss confidential financial data to protect the interests of business to be discussed. Roar.
Ten, fifteen minutes. I might also add, Trustee Rios, an additional session under the attorney-client privilege to discuss matters which would be deemed privileged within the attorney-client relationship, and that would be for approximately ten minutes. On the first personnel exception, you would invite in Mr. Dan Murtaugh, and that would be for approximately ten to fifteen minutes, and then thereafter, Mr. Bodie, Dr. Aga Jaffar would also be invited, depending on the board's progression in its activities.
So, do we need to do that separately, or totality, which was forty minutes, what you just shared?
Let's do it in the totality, and then we will come out and indicate when we move from one to the other.
Okay, for executive session for forty minutes, that's fine.
Wait a minute, Darrell, you said we come, we going to come out and go back in?
Yeah, we, we will come out and announce when we're moving to the executive session. We can have someone do that, so that the public knows where we are in our executive session.
Okay. So, forty minutes altogether?
Yes, ma'am. With the first one being the personnel action, as the agenda says, with Mr. Murtaugh being there in the beginning, and then, from there, we'll proceed as you indicated.
Okay.
Have a motion.
So moved.
And now, I have a second. Mr. Towns. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll be back. Okay, we are back in open session here, and we have some unfinished business.
Your personnel report.
Yeah, the personnel report, agenda item eight.
Move approval of items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, under Human Resources Recommendation C.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, under agenda item eight. B or C? B. Any further discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And I had a question, Darrell, on, I should have asked you, we had a special joint meeting of the KCKCC Endowment Association Board and the Board Trustees on April the twenty-fourth.
Yes, Mr. J.
We have some notes from that. Do, do we need to approve those, since we had a?
My thought is that you amend your, your minutes to reflect that you met jointly with the Endowment Association, upon which time you ate, you exchanged pleasantries, you had general discussions about whatever, you had general discussions, no action was taken, and then you promised to meet again in the future. It's what I recall occurred, and there was no executive session, and the meeting was properly noticed. What you're doing now is just correcting the minutes to reflect what actually occurred.
Okay. Got that, Peggy?
We need a motion to correct the minutes?
You could, if, if you're inclined.
Okay, I just move it, just so we cover our bases.
Yeah.
Move for a correction of the minutes of our special joint meeting with the Endowment Association.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks for that clarification, Darrell, and Peggy, thank you for.
Tomorrow night's graduation, you have parking passes for, we will, I will make sure that the campus police understand, if you come to tonight's GED celebration, GED graduation, that it, they're good for tonight also. They're not a one-day pass.
And just a reminder that we're meeting with the College Senate today at eleven-thirty, and what was the room, Dr. Givens?
Twenty-three, twenty-five.
Twenty-three, twenty-five, which is right downstairs.
It's downstairs from there.
At eleven-thirty?
Room twenty-three, twenty-five.
Hey, what time?
Eleven-thirty. It is quarter eleven. It's ten forty now. Okay, any other unfinished business for the board?
Take a meeting, move for adjournment.
Have a motion to adjourn, and a second and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.